You gotta have five for a forum.
Oh, yeah, we had a couple, so they weren't counting. Oh, thank you.
I don't think we have anything on that. Maybe they require six or something. That's good.
Call the meeting to order. Madam Chair, roll call, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell. Mayor Jones.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Toma.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
We'll have our roll call. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our invocation with Vice Mayor Lee Vogler. Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Let us all stand.
First, let's bow our heads. Lord, we come to you tonight thankful for being able to come here and meet tonight to discuss issues of importance to our city, but we also ask that you please provide comfort and wrap your arms around anyone who's lost a friend or a family member, someone close to them in the last few days, particularly the family who had the two-year-old boy that was found at Smith Mountain Lake today. As a father of two young children, I can't fathom what they're going through tonight, so, Lord, please be with them and provide comfort and love to them and their family members in this time of need. Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance tonight and that we do all we can to make this city a better place for everyone. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now have communications from our visitors. We'll ask Madam Clerk to give us some rules to those who desire to speak.
Citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered.
Anyone who desires to speak, please come forward. Now state your name and your address. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Cornell. I'm actually representing a great event that we are putting together on next event, that we already put together for next event on July 14th, 2018. It's called Rock the Block. As you see in front of you, you have a flyer in front of you to let you know what's going on. The Rock the Block event is to help build community relationship and end violence in our neighborhoods. This event is a sponsorship event and partner with Mother Stronger Together and one of our DRF interns, and I'm hoping that every one of you will be able to come out to this event. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. If you have any questions for everyone out in Facebook land and looking at live, we do have two contact information numbers that you can contact. That number is (540) 481-0252, or it's (434) 728-6272. If you'd like to volunteer, you can go to rdbvolunteer@gmail.com, or you can like our Facebook page, Rock the Block. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Once again, please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Joseph Carbone. My address is 351 Hawthorne Drive, Danville, Virginia. My understanding is that the council will be taking up the unanimously approved special use permit for Two Witches to build a 30 by 70-foot covered stage for outdoor music performances that the Danville Planning Commission has approved. I would request that I be given the time to speak to that matter. I'm gonna play you a recording of outdoor music from Buffalo Wild Wings on June 15th at about 10:30 PM, taken from an open window in my 12-year-old son's room. I ask that you listen to the recording and compare the sound from the band across the river to other ambient noises such as trucks and motorcycles rumbling down Memorial Drive and even a train whistle later in the recording. I appreciate the council indulging me and the mayor allowing me to play the whole song. Understand, while this song runs about four minutes, our neighborhood is subjected to four to five hours of it every time there is a band. You'll hear ambient noises such as cars, trucks, cars. Yeah, the music's still continuing. A truck on the road. Those might not stay long. Back. Another truck. Motorcycle. I'll cut to the train whistle. Train whistle. I think the place is dead. Okay. I appreciate your patience. I feel it's unacceptable that this noise is permitted to disturb the quality of life in residential community that existed long before any of these establishments. Furthermore, when Two Witches had outdoor performances as well, the dueling bands make the noise even worse. My wife and I have contacted the Danville Police on many occasions, only to be told that there's nothing that they can do, no city codes are being violated. When I brought the matter to the attention of the manager at Buffalo Wild Wings, I was told that the porch would be enclosed with upcoming renovations. These renovations have come and gone, and the promises were left unfulfilled. Ultimately, I and the rest of the neighborhood have been left defenseless against the ceaseless noise that disturbs our residential community. When I heard the Danville Planning Commission unanimously approve the special use permit for Two Witches to build a 30 by 70-foot covered stage for even more outdoor music performances, I could sit quietly no longer. I decided to appeal my concerns to the members of City Council. The Forest Hills neighborhood by the river is uniquely susceptible to noise generated from across the river. Physics tells us that sound, regardless of the direction of the amplifiers or the direction of the opening of the venue, creates sound waves that emanate in all directions. Transmission of this sound over a body of water like a river or a lake causes refraction of the higher sound waves back down to the surface, concentrating the sound on the other side. In other words, the Dan River actually amplifies any music generated from across the river. Only a solid wall can prevent this amplification. The idea of using plants to effectively diminish sound is a fallacy. That's why, when the passage of the Noise Control Act of 1972, the Department of Transportation began erecting solid-wall sound barriers along existing highways and currently requires that all future highways builds that are close to residential neighborhoods. The only way to get effective sound diminishing results is with the creation of a solid wall. One might argue that there is also noise created by the traffic along Memorial and Riverside Drives, yet this noise is transient, lasting three to five seconds compared to the ceaseless noise of an outdoor band playing four to five hours. You heard trucks and motorcycles along Memorial Drive. You heard the train whistle. Both were drowned out by the outdoor music across the river. Finally, the effects of noise pollutions are well-known and well-documented. Noise exposure has been linked to feelings of anxiety, depression, difficulty concentrating, and reducing efficiency at completing tasks, as well as physical problems like high blood pressure, insomnia, and fatigue. With schoolchildren living in the direct path of this noise pollution, these concerns are not unfounded. In closing, I feel strongly that it would be wrong of City Council to approve the special use permit allowing Two Witches to build a 30 by 70-foot covered stage that would result in even more outdoor music performances across the river. Let me be perfectly clear. I am not against the establishments having live music performances. I understand the need for the city to have places where people can go, listen to music, and have a good time. I only ask that the council follow the lead of the federal government, requiring solid walls between any music on Riverside Drive and along the riverfront between Robertson and Central Boulevard bridges to minimize its effect on the Forest Hills community. The only way to achieve effective sound results, reducing results, is to create a city code requiring all music along this corridor to be fully enclosed, preventing amplification of the sound by the Dan River into the Forest Hills residential neighborhood. Nothing less will do. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Dr. Carbone. I think Councilman Toma has a question for you.
Yeah, the recording, and you may have said this, what time was?
10:30.
So it was after 10:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe city code allows them to play till 11:00 in a... That's what the police tell me. City code allows them to play till 11:00 in a non-residential neighborhood.
What?
Midnight. Midnight. I apologize. Midnight.
On weekends, right. Weeknights, it's... I think it ends before that.
Dr. Miller, you may want to speak, or we didn't hear you.
Because I see 10:00.
No, it's between the hours of 6:00 AM and 12:00 AM in the following districts. HRC, Central Business District, Tobacco Warehouse District, and the Plain Shopping Center Commercial District.
Every night.
Every night, okay.
Every night.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Carbone? Thank you so much, Dr. Carbone.
If that wall was behind the stage, will that reflect the music?
I don't know. I don't know.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Just so that I'm clear about when you're talking about a wall, are you talking about having it built alongside the river, parallel to the river?
I'm not asking the city to build a wall. I'm just saying that a solid wall is the only thing that'll diminish the sound. And in answer to your question, I think that the literature that I've read is, sound emanates regardless of a wall between. What I'm requesting is that the city require the venues to enclose their music, fully enclosed, four walls and a roof.
So no outdoor music? If it... I mean, if it's enclosed, it's indoor, correct? Is that what?
Correct, yes. Indoor music. In that area, next to a residential neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Carbone. Anyone else would like to speak to council? We're still in open communication. Anyone else? I've been set to close the public hearing. Council, your pleasure on the minutes. Consideration of approval of minutes for regular council meeting held on June 5th, 2018. Councilman Buckner, first and second by Councilman Saunders. Madam Chair, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell. Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Under new business, consideration of granting a special use permit for commercial recreation outdoor at 209 Trade Street, I open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this matter? Please, once again, state your name and your address, and welcome to council.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Brown. This is my wife, Julie Brown. We're co-owners of Two Witches Winery and Brewing. We're here on behalf of the company to answer any questions you or anybody else we have about our requests.
And the property's located at 209 Trade Street.
Excuse me.
The property, you asked for address, so it's located at 209 Trade Street.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Dr. Miller.
Yes. What type of music you plan to have there, and are you able to temper down? You know, sometimes it matters how loud they turn the amplifiers up, and I know when you're inside, you try to keep... Tell people to keep them down, because it's hard to hear music if it's that loud and you're on top of it. What we all plan to do to temper the music?
The evolution of music at Two Witches, this begins at the local level. We... The foundations are with local musicians who value music and the quality of music that they play and that they listen to. So the godfather of music at Two Witches, I'm gonna put his name out there, Stuart Jennings. He's a devout musician. He's taught us a lot about the quality of sound. He's helped modify the interior of our space and our taproom to enhance that quality. He and several other musicians contribute their time to creating a quality music venue. And therefore, the music that we play is mostly mid-range on the musical spectrum. It's not anything on either end of the musical genre spectrum. Americana is its best described. So our intention with this outdoor stage is to have... To hire professional musicians who come with professional sound personnel, who understand the value of the quality of the music. And we're not looking to have, you know, essentially garage bands, turn it up to volume 11. We're looking for a quality show, because we anticipate that our customers are looking for a quality music venue and a quality sound. So then, by turning it up as loud as you can, you just can't get the quality. So that was our intention with this venue.
Councilman Buckner.
Yeah, as a former venue owner, I know the challenges that you guys are about to face, but they are fixes for it. You know, even if you left one side open and closed three sides, you could insulate it with the way I had to do it. This was years ago, of course, but we used two-inch insulation, you know, styrofoam insulation. If... I don't know what your design is for the property. Haven't seen any drawings or anything of it, but I think if you were to, you know, build three walls and leave the front open and insulate it well enough, it wouldn't even back... You know, it wouldn't even back up. I think it would just go straight across, and people in Westover would be complaining then.
There's currently fencing on three sides of our property.
Right.
And the way the stage is laid out, it will... The music will face the building.
Okay.
So there is a hard-walled surface there that the music will go towards.
And the stage is actually smaller. It's 30 by 20. So it's just only a third of our concrete pad that we have outside.
And as for timeframe, most of our music has been on Friday nights from 8:00 until 10:00. We are not interested in having establishment that's open till midnight, and that we have a history of that, to our knowledge. No one has called. We haven't had issues with the police. We haven't had issues with our citizens. We've been good corporate citizens. For the region, we see this as an opportunity to boost tourism and quality of life in the Dan River region.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, as you mentioned, you know, the business itself, Two Witches, has evolved, you know, over the years, and you guys have grown and, you know, done so many other things since it initially opened, and great things for the community. I think you touched on it, but maybe, again, just elaborate on that you've had... You've certainly had indoor music performances, but even outdoor, you know, music events or events that had music without any kind of stage or direction of sound in it in that way.
Correct. So we've been open four years, so we're very grateful for that. As a small business, a small family-owned business, we've been having outdoor music. This just provides an elevated area and a covered area in case of inclement weather.
And again, you talked about the hours. Typically, Two Witches, even on weekends, you guys, for the 90% of the time, you close, what, 10:00 usually? I mean, it's... You're not one of the later night places, so...
Our posted hours close at 9:00. Usually on Friday nights, if we have music, we'll run to 10:00. Our intention here, though, with the... And the reason for the special use permit application is, we intend to have ticketed events. We're looking to bring, right now, the music acts that we bring into Two Witches, 80% of which, by the way, are local musicians. We like to promote our local talent. We pay their fee for playing, but our intention is to bring somewhat more of a national type of music venue, people that wouldn't normally travel through here. We're trying to get them to come through here with their... But they have a bit of a higher price, so we would have to charge tickets, hence the reason for the permit, the special use permit application.
I'm gonna yield to the city manager to give some comments.
I just wanted to... I think you actually answered a question or the point that I wanted staff to make of our community development director, Ken Gilli, would come up here. I think it's important for the council to understand that the purpose of this special use permit is to allow for ticketed music, to charge for music. They, right now, can, and you can fill this in more for me, but right now, they are able to provide music outside without any special use permit at all.
Correct. The special use permit is just for the commercial recreation portion. As their business operates, they can provide free music. They can do it outside. Meets the sound ordinances, our city attorney said, they can actually go from 6:00 to 12:00 because of the zoning of the property. The only reason they need this special use permit is because they will no longer pay the acts themselves. They will start charging tickets. That means it's a revenue generator, and it falls under our zoning section of commercial recreation. So it just comes down to if they collect tickets. If they don't, they're fine as it is.
Any questions for Mr. Gilli? Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Councilman Toma.
So basically, just to summarize this, voting tonight isn't gonna change the noise. It just means you'll go from having local acts to more regional or national acts, but you still have the right to play the music under the current city code. So that... Just so council understands that, that doesn't impact what they're already doing. So...
Any more questions? Thank you all so much.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Councilman Toma.
Yeah, and the noise ordinance, while we're on this topic, I don't see a decimal... There's no decimal amount to this ordinance? I mean, to our existing city?
That's correct. A couple of years ago, the Supreme Court ruled a number of... Actually, they ruled Virginia Beach's noise ordinance unconstitutional. I was modeled after Virginia Beach, so we went back, and there were two different models. There was the decibel level, and the decibel meters are extremely expensive. This is one that places a standard that basically says, if you can hear it in your house or you can hear it a certain amount away, then it's a violation of the code, and that fits within the requirements that the Supreme Court set down in the Tanner case.
But I guess, being that they're in this commercial district...
That's exempt.
Then it's exempt, so it doesn't... Unfortunately, under our code, it doesn't matter whether Dr. Carbone can hear it in his house or not.
As long... Yeah, as long as it's within those parameters, those time parameters.
So under our code, I mean, they could literally hook up a jet engine and just fire it all night until midnight, and it wouldn't matter.
Well, I think it talks about instruments, drums and instruments like that. So I don't think that would do it, but certainly something that is at that decibel level, I guess theoretically could.
But there's no volume guidance.
No.
You good, Mr. Toma?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're looking at two separate topics tonight. We're looking at whether we want to give them permission to have professional acts come in, and then Dr. Carbone's complaint, I think is kind of a separate issue that maybe council needs to go back and look at at some point. I mean, because if they did hook up something that's just extreme, if I had kids and lived in that neighborhood, I wouldn't be happy either. Not Two Witches, but I mean, any of the businesses in any of these districts. I know that the decibel level is expensive or whatever, but still, I mean, if I have two small children, I certainly wouldn't want loud music from across the venue blasting in my daughter's room at 10:30 at night. So as a parent, I empathize with this situation.
Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to be too redundant, did you say, Mr. Whitfield, the ordinance now say 12:00, midnight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because Mr. Brown said it's tonight about 10:00, but if, for whatever reason, they went over 10:00, they're still okay up until midnight?
Yes, sir.
Because they said it, they are not restricted to 10:00.
That's correct.
Okay. Give you some options here, free way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're more than welcome. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counselman Saunders.
Action ordinance granting special use permit to commercial recreation outdoor in accordance with Article 3M, Section C, Item 4, Co-City of Danville, Virginia, 1988, as amended at 209 Trade Street, otherwise known as a grid 1713, Block 3, Hospital 8, City of Danville, zoning district map.
Is there a second? Second about Vice Mayor Vogler. Call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell. Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
New business, Item B. Consideration of authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to the City of Danville, Virginia, in the maximum principal amount of $16 million. I open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this matter? Please come forward and speak now. Anyone like to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds of the City of Danville, Virginia, in the maximum principal amount of $16 million to finance the acquisition, construction, and the equipment of various capital projects. First reading.
Thank you so much. Consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Milestone Tower Limited Partnership IV. I open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor Vogler.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Milestone Tower Limited Partnership IV for the placement of a communications tower and equipment at 300 Goode Street.
Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Consideration of authorizing an application to the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for mass transit funding. I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Toma.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing an application by the city to the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for grants for operating and capital costs for public transportation for fiscal year 2019.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Discussion of the motion. Madam Chair, call the roll, please.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell. Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Consideration of filing an application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a grant under the Federal Transit Act. I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor Vogler.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution confirming and ratifying the filing of an application by the city to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a grant under the Federal Transit Act as amended.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Toma.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell. Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Consideration of amending the FY 2019 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for the federal and state transit capital assistance fund for regional bus services. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for federal and state transit capital assistance funds related to the provision of regional bus services by the Danville Transit System to Halifax and Pennsylvania counties.
First reading. Consideration of amending the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget appropriation ordinance for a Department of Criminal Justice Services grant to fund the gang prevention coordinator. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Tom.
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twen- two thousand nineteen budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue for a Department of Criminal Justice Services Commonwealth of Virginia Office of Attorney General Grant for establishment of the Danville Crime Prevention to be used to fund the gang prevention coordinator for first reading.
If it's okay with council, I'd like for city manager to give us an update on the gang prevention coordinator, if that's okay? Please.
Absolutely. Just, just for background, after council adopted, there are three focus areas, one including reducing violent crime. The staff went and had established a gang task force and a youth task force. The gang task force, pretty much within the first two meetings, decided to go forward with adopting the comprehensive gang model, which is recommended by the Office of Juvenile Justice in Delinquency Prevention and the National Gang Center. As part of this comprehensive gang model, we had to do some data collection and some other preliminary work, but eventually, we needed to hire, according to this recommendation, somebody to coordinate all our efforts because everyone who's been involved in the gang task force and the youth task force all have other jobs that they're doing and they're trying to manage those day jobs. So, hiring the gang task force coordinator was an essential part of moving this project forward. I will say that the, it took some time to get the grant money in place and to get approval to go forward and to hire the right person. I'm pleased to say that we did hire somebody who started a few weeks ago. His name's Robert David. He will be here at the next council meeting to introduce himself and you'll see that he has a very strong passion for helping youth in our community. He, he introduced himself to the gang task force and the youth task force during his first week of employment. Everyone there was really excited to meet him, thought he did a great job explaining what he was going to be doing. Just a few things that, that will be on his radar screen. He's going to be taking the data that has been gathered by the Rand Corporation, analyzing crime statistics in Danville. He's going to be using that to help develop a strategic plan. Once that strategic plan is developed, he will have a roadmap of what we need to do as a community to improve our situation with regard to gangs. He's well-equipped to do that. He's got a lot of experience and background. I think everyone saw the press release when we announced him. Another thing he's going to be doing is seeking additional grant funds to help further what he's doing, you know, potentially workforce development funds so that he can go out in the community, encourage people to find jobs or get the training necessary to be qualified to get those jobs. Also, right now, in the meantime, he's been going out and meeting with the professionals in, in Danville, either nonprofits or grassroots efforts that are already working with youth. He's connecting with them. He's going out, meeting people in barber shops wherever he can, talking to members of the community, getting his name out there so that he can better respond when needed to any issues that are out there in the community. I will be providing an update with you, to you on our Friday report so that you know exactly what he's been doing, but I look forward to you meeting him on July seventeenth so that he can talk to you about the passion he has for youth and what he thinks he can do to make a difference in Danville.
Just to add to that, on next Tuesday, he will be attending the school board meeting with Councilman, Vice Mayor Vogler and myself to introduce himself to the school board, the new school board members and members of our school board community. Thank you so much, city manager.
Thank you.
Communications from city manager.
I have nothing to addition, thank you.
Deputy city manager.
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk?
Nothing.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Tomer?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Yeah, I want to thank Paul Ed Dean from the Humane Society for being here tonight and Officer Hodges. I know we're going to have a discussion in the work session about some, some modifications to the tethering ordinance that Councilman Tom has brought forward to us, and I look forward to that discussion here in just a little bit. And again, a reminder from what was presented to us earlier, I want to make sure I got this right. So, is it, is it Rock the Block or is it Rock D Block? Because I remember the locks back in the day talking about D Block, so I wanted to make sure I had it right, so. But, but July fourteenth, Taylor Drive Park from twelve to six, going to be a great event. And you mentioned it earlier, you mentioned the number, but you didn't say who, who the number belonged to with Taekwon Graves. And he's telling me, no, but I'm going to do it anyway. This is what they, what they call initiation kind of thing. He just, Taekwon Graves, you may recall, just got elected to the school board, so he's not going to be getting enough phone calls as it is anyway. So, if you want to call him for more information about this event, it's four-three-four-seven-two-eight-six-two-seven-two. You know, make sure you give him a call and, and help him out. He'll be happy to hear from you. And, and lastly, I, I just, I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. It, it was wonderful, numerous events. I know the mayor was out everywhere yesterday. I, I don't know how he, he covered so many events, but he did a great job. And I was down with my family in the, in the YMCA area when the fireworks were going off last night and it was jam-packed. I could see people across the river, filled up everywhere, all over the city, people watched them and the feedback over there where we were at, over near the YMCA, people really loved the fireworks this year. The new location seemed to work well for, for most folks and, but we always want to hear feedback and things we can do to improve them, but everything that I heard for the most part last night was overwhelmingly positive. It's one of the best fireworks shows I remember watching in a long, long time. So, hats off to everybody who made that happen, all, all the city workers, police and everyone did a fantastic job. And with that, that's all I have and wish everyone a great rest of the week. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Yeah, just for the Rotary Club did just a wonderful job with the Field of Honor and I just wanted to give a shout out to them and everybody be safe for the holiday. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, just second what everybody else has already said, yesterday was a great event. Here in Danville at the Carrington Pavilion, as well as Green Street Park, I saw Mayor Jones there. Just a great turnout all over the city. One city, one love. It was all great. We really had a great time yesterday. Other than that, I hope you all have a wonderful weekend and stay safe and stay cool.
Reverend Campbell. Mayor Jones.
Just want to, as ditto what's been said so far, it has been a very busy week, very exciting week. As was stated, I was at the Field of Honors on yesterday with, with Danny Marshall and others. Just want to thank the Rotary Club and Mr. Albert Cronby for what they did with that and some of the young adults are here now that was with us at Green Street Park on yesterday. That, they pulled that together at the last minute, wanted to do some things for the young people and young adults in that community and it was very successful. And then we, me and my family went down to the fireworks at the Carrington Pavilion and so was some exciting things going on down there. But back to the Rock the Block, if there's, the stand committee is here, if you all could stand up, the entire committee that's here that met with the city manager, he was there today, if you all don't mind standing up, just want to talk about this for a little bit and just let you all know what's happening. What we want in Danville, and you've heard Vice Mayor Vogler and I come out with it earlier, along with our three strategies, we ask for partnerships. And one of the things that we want with these partnerships is to help council with these three strategies that we have, reduce violent crime, education, and grow Danville. We need the same partnership we have with these people here in this, to deter the crime that's in our community. We need your help. If you see something, say something. Councilman Vogler and I was talking today about a few incidents that's occurred over last night and today. In Councilman Vogler's prayer today, he prayed for those persons who were hurt and were harmed in our community. Before I got here tonight, I went to visit the lonely family on First Street, the young, the young lady died in the fire last night. Please, if you see something, we need your help. If you see something, say something in our community because we're determined with our three strategies to have a safe community and we're very serious about it. Our police chief, our city manager, our city council, we're working very hard, so we need your help. If you see something, say something. And I just want to say to you all standing, thank you so much because the whole objective of this event on July the fourteenth is to pull in people from around that surrounding community to bring Taylor Drive and Parkin Creek back to life because so many people said we don't have things for our young people to do. And so, we're talking about putting things, we was in Green Street Park, we going to Taylor Drive, so we need your help. If you see something, please say something. And Vice Mayor, thank you so much for that prayer because when I got to First Street, those families were sitting out there on the porch, house had burned down and they pained of what took place and lost their loved ones. Thank you so much.
Dr. Miller?
Well, I was down in Carrington last night and I saw the mayor and he, three little girls are leading him around. He had lightsabers, they'd gone to get ice cream, they'd gone to get funnel cakes. It's a good thing there was an ATM down there, that's all it matters. And great music, Carolyn Jones, patriotic songs and the Womper Brothers, so it was a great show, a great show. I had a chance to go to the dispatch office recently, see the dispatcher. You know, we criticize them a lot, but they're, it's a tremendously stressful job, twelve-hour shifts. Sit there for twelve hours, sometimes it's so busy you don't get a bathroom or meal break, you have to do it sitting at your desk. They're understaffed, that's being rectified. They do request the public stay calm, clearly state your name, your reason for your call, and address where you're calling from. There is a non-emergent number, seven-nine-nine-five-one-one-one, for things that don't rise to the level of emergencies. And this is like dead deer blocking the road or you think you see a burglar or something like this. Problem, I saw, there's caller ID for nine-one-one calls, but there's a knock for this non-emergency number and we need to look at that again, that was taken away. One dispatcher told me he had somebody that called threatening suicide and he's trying to talk the man down and the call dropped. He had no way to call the man back. I appreciate the city manager looked at that. The, there's been a lot of turnover in dispatch. Six of the sixteen people there in two thousand fourteen are, are left. Ten have gone. Some people decide it's not for them, some transferred to utilities department, but some transferred to other dispatches, then to county and also in Raleigh. So, we need to look at that and see if we're competitive with our salaries. This is an extremely stressful job. Problems, you know, last time, I know I'm the bad guy tonight, but we've got some problems, you know, with our, our overall dispatch, not our dispatch, but our life-saving, life-care, fire department, we've got problems here. The more I, since I brought up the one issue, I've recovered five, five other issues have been brought in the last two weeks to me. I'm not going to go through all these, take too long, there'd be HIPAA violations if I did. A couple of problems I've come up with, the life care is using cell phones, they're based in Fredericksburg. If you've got great cellphone service in Danville, let me know who your carrier is. I lose service in the hospital, I lose service as I go up onto Piedmont Drive, you lose service on the bypass, and they're depending on cell phones. And I've talked to life care the other day about that. We need a joint communication system where everybody's on the same page. This was part of the problem, call, the problem I mentioned, they lost cellphone coverage, they were in a nursing home and couldn't get coverage. That was part of the problem that led to what I described to you before. The, there's reluctance of the life-saving crew, and this is before life care ever came, to come to doctors' offices. They don't want to be doing intra-agency or intra-facility transfers, so they always send Regional One and not life care. When there's an emergency in a doctor's office like this was, in a stroke or a heart attack, you don't need the backup ambulance service, you need the life-saving crew. And we need, we need to get the life-saving crew to change that policy. Somebody calls, I mean, if this patient had been having a stroke at Walmart, guess who would have showed up? Fire truck and the life-saving crew. But since it was a doctor's office, they sent a backup life care system. So, I can't lay that on, lay that on life care. We got people walking in our office with pressures of two-twenty over one-hundred-and-ten, people having a heart attack, people having strokes, they don't want to go to the emergency room, so they land down in our office. If we call and say we need the rescue squad, we want the rescue squad. In Henry County and Martinsville, there's a common dispatch. In Halifax and South Boston, one dispatch covers all of them. There's not one in Lynchburg. They have three counties that surround the city, so it'd be a little difficult up there. Sometimes there's disputes, fifteen or twenty times a month, I'm told, the county has to reroute dispatches to the city because the wrong place has been called. If you only have one dispatch service, they've dispatched the service, whatever, whatever